You have your chairs, your seats please. We'll bring the council meeting to order please. Tuesday, February the 3rd, I guess we're gonna start at 7:01. Roll call please.
Councilmembers Payne, here.
Claire.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
You can all rise for a silent prayer and remain standing for the flag presentation by the Girl Scout Group 322.
Will you all please join me in the flag of allegiance?
I salute the United States of America and I do the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard is next.
Thank you scouts. Agenda approval additions or deletions, are there any? I'm sorry, let me back up. Video statement please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Now we'll have the agenda approval additions and our deletions, are there any?
D six.
B six?
D.
D six? D three? D three. No others? Okay. Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Al Baldwin.
Good evening, Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt and a community of character that's growing in leaps and bounds. Tonight you're going to be voting on something and I wanted to cover it now rather than later. You're going to be talking about the conditional use permit for the Family Life Church. I don't know what your decision will be yet, but I'm suggesting that you go to the original agreement, which was, I believe, $588. There seems to be a miscommunication. The pastor has, he's indicated that he did not finalize the lease on the property with the property owner after the council approved the zoning code amendment thereby making this the middle of his CUP application prior to October 20th. He had a challenge and a problem to get it done, he couldn't get it done. And to jump from 580, um, 583 dollars or something, no, 566 dollars, it jumped to $3,642. I know we need the money, this is hard times, but the original agreement that he thought he understood would be 566, he knew, it informed him that it would go up, but he was, he just didn't understand, the staff, he says, told him that they, he thought that they were going to still honor the old price. And apparently the staff socked him with a bill and that's what I know you're going to be, be here discussing tonight when it comes up. And I wanted to hit you real quick before it starts, I would really like to see you approve the old one and let the pastor do God's work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Fred Gabel?
Good evening Fred Gabel, I'm a resident of the city. I actually wanted to come tonight, so often we hear griping at these meetings. Yesterday morning I was on my way to the high school for one of the many meetings I have there. I was going up north on Lincoln and as I looked up I saw a police officer coming south on Lincoln just, just outside the school zone and he flicked his lights on. There were no cars ahead of him, so I knew he wasn't doing a traffic stop. And I watched him and he went probably 25 miles an hour through the entire school zone. He blew his siren before he hit the crosswalk in front of the high school in case any kids were there, it was like 7:35 in the morning. And he did not accelerate out of, above the speed limit of the school zone until he was past A Street. And I thought that was very commendable, he could've saved maybe five seconds going to whatever call it was, but instead he chose to make the right choice, go through the school zone at the right, uh, speed and not risk hitting or killing a kid. And I just thought that was very commendable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Rick Walters? Uh, Tom Huer?
This is kind of a continuation of our discussion that we've been having in regards to the Delta Greens. And I, I agree with Darrell. In politics, there's people that have been involved on both sides of the issue. Politics can be a nasty business, which everyone knows. And one of the main objectives in politics is to get information out to support your cause. However, in the effort, things are heard and said that may or may not be true. Many suppositions are claimed that may or not, may or may not bear fruit. And only time will tell. That's when facts get separated from speculation. That's when you discover the unintended consequences. However, that's when it's too late. It's like being sold a piece of property next to the railroad tracks. And then complaints about the noise. Then the people want the whole city to pay for whatever relief is necessary. There's been much discussed by a group, Citizens to Protect Galt's Future. As a political group, I can't rely on them for full disclosure. They never asked me to join, they never asked me to participate. I have no idea what these people operate in secret and don't want to disclose, uh, who is involved. I don't know, council member Meredith, are you a part of this group or have you ever been attended meetings or anything?
No, I don't.
Do you know who they are?
You're welcome, but I haven't attended their meetings.
Councilmember Payne, do you know this group and been involved?
I, I do know most of the members of this group. And for your information, I have attended two of their meetings that I can remember.
Okay. Councilmember Claire?
We all know most of their members from correspondence, I haven't attended their meetings.
Mayor Shelton?
I attended one meeting when we were talking about individuals running for city council, which would have been two years ago probably.
Okay. Thank you for your honesty. Basically, um, it, it's important that, uh, full disclosure is known in terms of what the activities and participation is in some of these groups because, um, like I say, I think there's a lot of other opinions and there's a lot of other viewpoints on the subject, uh, that, like I've been a citizen for over 20 years in Galt and I don't think anybody's asked my opinion, so, um, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rick? You're it.
Good evening, council. My name is Rick Walters and I live in the city of Galt. It has been brought to my attention that two of our sitting council members have ties to the PAC called Concerned Citizens to Protect Galt's Future. These two council members Payne and Shelton are members of this PAC according to the following literature, right here in my hand. This is a quote from one of the mailers from April 15th, 2008. Quote, "If you would like to speak to one of our committee members, please call," and there's a telephone number, "and leave a message. We will get back to you as soon as we can." Then it lists the members you can talk with, which one of these members is Randy Shelton. So this is, this clearly indicates that Randy Shelton is a PAC member. This means that the PAC agenda is his agenda, lock, stock and barrel. In my opinion, you cannot separate the two. Therefore, he is prohibited by law to vote on any issue concerning the Delta Greens project. This is clearly a conflict of interest matter and I am asking our city clerk to review this matter along with the city attorney and come back at a televised council meeting with the results of their findings. I'd like to repeat that. Come back at a televised council meeting with the results of their findings. The next PAC agenda for May 10th, 2008, indicates the following. Item number one, report on economic plan presentation to see council on 7th May, Barbara Payne. Item number five, status on securing property in town for an office, Barbara Payne. Item 15, campaign fundraiser donation activities, Barbara Payne. This also clearly indicates that Barbara Payne is also tied with this PAC and has a conflict of interest concerning the Delta Greens matter. I am asking our city clerk along with our city attorney to make their findings known on this matter also. This is not about Delta Greens. This is about what happens when money dictates the future growth of our city. What does it say about the voting process when the agenda is already fixed and in place once these individuals are elected into office? This is clearly a character issue that our city is striving for in a focused way. What does it say to our young people when money is above all other issues and concerns? "Elect me and I will do what you want, then turn around and do the bidding of those who brought you to the dance." The last part of my statement concerns the frame of mind of the PAC's true intentions and being open and above board. I quote, "Since we are a county PAC, any donations up to $99 does not have to identify the donor when we file our statement to the state. We are not a city PAC and therefore do not have to follow their much more restrictive guidelines," end of quote. I believe they are in violation of the county PAC because you must also, during the course of business, conduct work on county measures or issues with vigor, which I don't believe they have done. God bless our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
So we had two consent agenda items pulled. D, yes, would you please?
Consent calendar, item number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular council meetings of January 20th. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, adoption of ordinance 2009-1 to establish development impact fees for Measure A transportation improvements. Number four, and that one was pulled and will be discussed. Number four, adoption of ordinance 29-02 implementing the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006. Number five, amendment to the Transit Services Agreement for SCT Link. And number six, which was pulled and will be discussed, police fees, parking bail schedule.
Okay, pleasure of council, let's pull, shall we talk with, uh, D five and then D six first? I'm sorry, three, okay. D three and D six.
Okay, I pulled three.
Okay.
This is an ordinance where we've already considered the transportation, uh, improvements and fees related to this and the Measure A and all. One thing I was gonna ask to Ted, Kurt, Jason and council, given how little's going on in any kind of construction, and this would be for either retail, commercial or houses, we might want to think about looking at allowing people, the few who can pull a building permit anymore, to phase their payments for things where we're collecting fees that we're not incurring any costs at the front end and letting them pay through the process, say at framing for example. And not collecting a fee like the Measure A fund or something like that or a related one that we don't need on the first day of the permit to help them with cash flow. And this just made me think of that and I know some other cities in our region are doing that and it might help us stay competitive. Obviously, we want all the fees collected, but I think there may be some room to let them, let them get a foundation in the ground and get a parking, you know, if I've been watching Rite Aid and the tractor supply for example, I can only just kind of guess the kind of cash they've had to spend to get to where they are today and neither of them have opened the front doors and, and made any revenue from that project. So, I just, as an idea, maybe we can look at how we can help businesses and stuff like that by phasing fees.
I think it's a very good idea, I think council would have to give us some direction to do that. The only caveat I'd say is that there needs to be a nending date specific.
Oh yeah.
In that period because some projects, you know, some go on for years, but if you came and said, well, a normal house would go up in six months, you get six months to pay, you make payments and do that, or a normal, uh, commercial one is, is nine months, I think staff would have no problem if council would say, yeah, you can work out some agreement, let them make payments over that time.
Yeah, again, to be very clear, I'm not talking about where we are incurring hard costs ourselves, we need those monies to cover them. But where we're collecting fees that are gonna be used for future things, whether we collect it on day one or at the six month mark, but, so it's very clear they can't have occupancy and get into issues there.
The only thing that I would like to check and be able to report back to council on is our system on the automation and issuance of permits.
Right.
I'm not sure what would be involved to change that because the, obviously the fees would not be collected and that's shown on the permit, so it would be looking at what is in the system and see what, may have to get hold of vendor and find out what adjustments would have to be made.
Okay.
Um, in timing.
Yeah, like I say, I'm not proposing any action tonight, this item just made me think of. It's just like if you're building a home and you're taking your draws from your short-term construction loan, say you're gonna build a, a $500,000 building for retail or something, nobody takes all 500,000 out on the first day because that's when they start paying their interest. They take it out as they need it to build and I'm just thinking maybe we can help phase.
Um, just a, a couple of thoughts, because we had this conversation with the council, um, about eight months ago when the Holiday and Express project was coming forward.
Right, yep.
And we brought that back to the council for consideration where we deferred fees. First fees would be due upon condition of the certificate of occupancy and then certain fees a couple of years after that. And we talked to the council about this issue of other cities that were starting to look at phasing in the fees and so forth. And the council at that time provided direction to staff, but they didn't want to develop a specific program, but that it would be on a case-by-case basis, that we would, we would speak with developers as they came in and kind of crafted the program or the pro, or the, based on the need of that, that project. For example, we've done, mostly on the commercial side, we've probably done four or five to my knowledge where we've had some level of deferment of fees. I know with the Rayleigh's project, it was done there, both are, both hotel projects, the, um, the theater project and a number of other ones that we have been able to work out agreements with. Galt Place is another one where the, the fees aren't due until certificate of occupancy. So it's kind of been on an as-needed basis as people have come to us with different, you know, concerns about cash flow and so forth. We've been able to work out agreements and I think it's worked pretty well. Um, on the residential side, it's a little bit, um, di- different and I think it's a little bit more difficult. And I think one of the reasons why cities haven't typically done it on the residential side, because this has happened in the past when you don't collect fees until certificate of occupancy. If you get to the end and they don't pay their fees and they've already sold the home to somebody else.
No, yeah.
Now you're fighting with the guy that's bought that house trying to get it to his home.
We, we went down that road and we, we avoided that with another project that I think we all remember. That's why I say perhaps that timing would be at framing or something, you wouldn't let it get there because yeah, you've got people in a U-Haul in the, in the driveway with their furniture and can't get in their house, we don't want that.
What, what we have done with this fee, because it is a new fee, we've, uh, spent most of last week one trying to get a full understanding of it, talked to the city attorney and internally, and have been contacting everybody that either has a permit out because it applies to extensions of permits, or those that we believe are going to be submitting, or those that have plans that are approved but have not been permitted. And I think we've covered just about everybody to this point.
Let staff, let staff take and mold it around, see if they can't bring a proposal back that might fit it.
Do you want us to develop a formal program or is it? I want to hear council if they even have interest in it or not. I just think, I, I've been reading some of the latest things out of the Sacramento Business Journal and SACTO and the competition to attract anything is just, as you know, crazy. And I just would like to keep ourselves poised to be competitive. Uh, Folsoms I know already done some things, I'm not sure if Elk Grove's already done. And, uh, there's, there's a number of businesses which bring jobs that are looking from out of state coming here, which amazes me that they are. Uh, and I would just want to make sure we're staying in there, getting our shot, especially as SACTO's bringing people through, so.
Yeah, I'd, I'd support the, looking at the concept, you know, my first concern is to make sure that we're protecting the existing residents from incurring any cost, but.
Absolutely.
I certainly want us to be competitive.
I agree, also, uh, you, would you consider putting a sunset date and how long you would allow this to occur? Because as the economy recovers, at some point in time, I'd like to see us go back to the way.
Sure.
We're doing things.
Mayor, I would also support it, I would like for it to be, uh, something a little more, um, formal so that we can get the word out as opposed to it just being case by case. Then if we have any prospects, they don't know upfront necessarily that we are willing to, uh, work with them. And I think the climate as it is, we do need to get the word out that as a city, um, you know, we welcome their, their business and willing to work with them. So I would like to see us do something a little more formal than just the case by case phase.
On a commercial or also on the residential?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking commercial.
Commercial, retail, commercial, retail.
Commercial, retail.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with all of you, we need to really look at it.
Okay, with that then I'll move item three.
Second. Is, is there any further discussion? None, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. And the other item was pulled was D six.
I pulled D six and I would ask, uh, the chief, is this your, your item? Uh, if you would explain it a little bit and especially the, uh, SD 1407, what all that's about? And then I have a couple of questions regarding your proposal. Are we using Elk Grove, is that what we're using as our guideline for our fee increase? It looks like that in the packet, uh, today.
Let, let me set it up a little bit because I want to make it clear, this is not specifically the chief's proposal. For about two years, we've been looking at these fees, decide what to do and I asked him to take a study to look to see what everyone else was doing. And based upon the information that he came back with, I asked him to submit it to the council for consideration. And so I've asked him to present this for you to look at and decide whether or not you think it would make some sense, particularly based upon what everyone else has done before us. We're, we're at the end of the line, uh, looking at these things, so you need to understand, most of the cities have already done this and have, have had these programs in place for several years.
I'm not opposed to it, I just wanted some clarification and also to understand that we are looking at Elk Grove fee schedules that we're going to, uh, adopt or use as a model, Exhibit A.
The package includes, uh, fee schedules from Elk Grove, SAC City and SAC County, it's not just Elk Grove. So I don't know if you didn't, if you didn't see what was behind there or if you didn't get them all.
No, I saw them all.
There's a whole bunch.
It referred to Exhibit A and the only thing marked as Exhibit A was the city of Elk Grove, but it doesn't really.
Now, we looked at all of them, not just Elk Grove.
Okay, well, let's, let's back up and if you would kind of go over that, especially, um, SD 1407.
Sure, um, in 1993, that Senate bill was passed which basically civilianized the parking procedure, took it away from the courts and put it into the city's hands or local jurisdiction's hands to set the bail and collect, um, the fees, um, either by themselves or through parking enforcement agencies such as the one that we use here in Galt. Um, and it basically passed, um, some general rules about keeping the bail consistent with the, what the county, the rest of the agencies in the county would set them at. So, um, in 1993, Galt adopted the bail for parking violations for the municipal code and for, uh, um, the other vehicle code parking violations. And this only deals with parking, so the handicap sections, the red zones, you know, the green zone, um, parking in the permit parking areas of town, um, those kind of things. When that legislation passed and we began, you no longer went to trial for those, you don't, you don't go to court anymore. There's an appeal process, we send off to data tickets as our vendor and if you disagree, you get two levels of appeal, um, and then the fines are, we pay data, uh, fee, uh, data ticket a small fee and we get the remainder of whatever the fine is. Every year, the rest of the cities in this county, just about every year, have raised their parking violation fees. Um, Galt hasn't touched ours since 1993. Ours are, um, in my opinion, so low as not to really be a deterrent. We have, um, we have some violations that, um, just, it's worth the 28 bucks to park where you want and take the ticket in some places. So, um, it was, um, at city manager's direction, I pulled the chiefs and said, what are you, what is, what are the rest of you doing? Um, and this was, um, a year, at the beginning of the year where the state slipped in a $4.50 fee on parking violations to every city in the state. Wasn't very widely talked about, but they retroited it back to January 1st. So, um, they start collecting probably if not now, soon, and we're gonna owe them 4.50 from all the parking tickets we collect back to the first of January.
Okay, that's the part that I was wanting you to clarify. So we are, are we now giving the state $4.50?
Yes.
And it's going back, how far?
Back to January 1st, now I don't know if we've sent them any money yet, but I know that the law has retroted it back to January 1st. And as I don't know if we've sent them any checks yet or not, so.
Okay, so the clarification I was really looking for is, do we get to keep all that money in our town that you're telling me no, $4.50 is going to the state?
Regardless of what the council does, the 4.50 is going to the state. Because they, they passed that as January 1st. Um, we still pay, pay data ticket, you know, our processing company a fee to process it. And then the remainder is, uh, is what the city gets. And then the remainder is, uh, is what the city gets, um.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem. I think we should keep up with what other cities are charging. Um, but I was curious, if we look at what we've got here from Elk Grove as the schedule we're gonna follow, they mentioned curb markings, um, red, yellow, white, green and blue. And I think that we're not doing that in the city.
Exhibit B is the proposed city of Galt's fee schedule. Exhibit A is the city of Elk Grove.
Okay.
So maybe that's where the confusion is.
So I, I'm, an exhibit B, I don't think. Regardless of what, of whether I have it or not, my question would be the same. In our exhibit, are we planning to use those terms of the red zone, blue zone, whatever? Because I think it's our policy in, in the city not to paint the curbs. And correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Now, we have colored curbs all over town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We have a red zone, we have loading zones which are green or yellow, we have curbs all over town.
I know we have some, but I thought we had decided not to do it because it was too much maintenance to keep it up. Cause I know there's a fire hydrant, for example, um, in front of my house, and the curbs aren't painted. In fact, I think in front of the police department, there's a fire hydrant, and I don't recall the curb painted there. Would that not normally be included?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not certain whether the fire hydrant requires a curb painting, and there's probably more ex- experts here in the room than I, but I know we have fire lanes, uh, all throughout the high school area that are red, and we enforce those with citations. We have red curb parking around the downtown in a few areas, we enforce those. I mean, we, we may not have a lot of them, but the ones we have, we write them, you know, vigorously, so.
Okay, so it is the policy of the city to paint the curb?
As far as I know.
That's what I thought Greg.
No, we don't paint curbs to get rid of fire hydrants. I believe it's ten feet either side of a fire hydrant, illegal to park a vehicle and leave the vehicle unattended.
Wait a minute, I have some experience in this. It's fifteen.
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 I asked council. You don't want that other five feet. Fifteen, two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
It becomes a practice maintenance.
For clarif- for clarification, it's a running joke within the city.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
My son parked in front of our home, our home has a fire hydrant, which has, it has since the day it was built. We've lived in the home sixteen years, but on a particular afternoon, my son's truck got a ticket for two hundred and sixty-five dollars. But I paid because he didn't even drive when we moved into that house, and he learned from me, his grandmother, our relatives, our friends, everybody's been parking in front of that fire hydrant for years. So, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, can't park within fifteen feet whether the curb is painted or not.
That's true, and obviously he's going to remember that if he lives to be a hundred and five. Go ahead, would you, you responded.
We occasionally get requests for this. I mean, we have done it in a couple of extreme locations, but there's a continual problem with limited parking in the neighborhoods. But as a general rule, because we have so many hydrants, and we have like fourteen hundred, we don't, we can't afford to paint them and then keep repainting them. And it creates problems when you have, paint them red, then it's faded out. As a general rule, we do not paint, uh, red in front of fire hydrants or next to driveways.
You're only talking about fire hydrants, there are other areas of the downtown that we paint red that are not in front of fire hydrants that we continue to paint and maintain. Right across the street from city hall, for example, is, is red, and we can, we will continue to maintain that as red.
Right, there are those, or some, the other big issue typically is near driveways. You can't park within, I believe it's ten feet, I believe you still have a driveway, um, and the, and block the lines of sight. And it really becomes a costly, there are some though, where there's no other way. We do also prefer to put no parking restrictions by sign, rather than red paint and curb where we can't, where it gets the desired effect.
So basically, it's just the fire hydrants that we're not painting the curb, that we are throughout the town otherwise? Is that right?
And that's the way I understand it. There are some locations on the alleys between C and B, where as Greg just said, we have signs saying, "No parking from here to the next intersection." I mean, that would just be a huge piece, I don't even think there's any curbs there in just their alleyways. But, um, you know, in the places downtown, particularly where we don't, you know, we don't allow parking, it's painted.
Okay.
Does that answer what?
It does. I was just trying to be sure that if we, if we say we're going to, um, uh, enforce a sign on the colored zones that we were in fact doing that. If we're not, then we, we don't wanna say that, but.
Right.
The clarification is it's only the fire hydrants that are not being painted.
Right.
So, I'm fine with that then, I would move to approve.
Motion's been made, is there, second? I'm sorry, another comment?
I, I did have, just a question for council. When looking at some of these, uh, parking fees charged in other cities, these penalties, I was noticing that a lot of our, the proposed fees that we would be charging, the fines for handicap violations, would be on the low end. So I'm asking if council would consider for code sections ten thirty-two, one hundred, five, which is blue zone handicap, we're proposing three sixty-nine. I'd like to propose that we increase that to four hundred. Code number two-two-five-zero-zero, parentheses L, which is on the second page on the packet, we're proposing three sixty-nine, I'd also like to increase that to four hundred. Then code two-two-five-oh-seven dot eight, parentheses A and B, handicap zone and blocking disabled access, we're proposing three sixty-nine for both of those as well, and I'd like to propose that we increase that to four hundred. I think that if we put up the signage in some of our shopping centers here in town, the four hundred is just gonna stand out above the three sixty-nine, and I, I think it's gonna provide quite a deterrent.
Would you oppose having the chief, along with one of the staff, reviewing each one of these fees for a ju- reasonable adjustments? Cause we are on the low end on many of those.
Well, it's kind of what you should already done with all this information, so.
Yeah, I see that, but I mean, there, there appears that we could make some other adjustments to bring us up to, uh.
May I suggest that maybe we bring this back? Cause it sounds like.
You do either way.
Yeah, we're, well, I mean, how much time we're gonna spend? I mean, I would rather, that's my recommendation, get with staff and a couple of council members and.
Well, does, does council have a problem with, with increasing?
No, I mean, I, I don't know how, how many code sections you guys wanna go through, but I mean.
Just those four are the only ones I'm proposing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don, I thought you had.
No, that's all right.
I'm sorry, Ted, go ahead.
I'll retract my statement, which I didn't make.
So now, this is a, uh, an ordinance that's being amended, so, just I wanna make sure I understand, are you amending the amendment?
Well, I'm trying to get council's input right now.
Sounds fine with me to, on the handicap, you're, you're specifically drawing the handicap ones in, um, four hundred sound.
Like the city of Sacramento charges four forty-five for blue zone violations, so we'd still be well underneath that.
I don't have any problem with it.
I don't either.
I think, you know, I think it's especially important for the, uh, increase in the parking fees because that, uh, the fact that the state's increasing their, their fees to four fifty and coupled with the fact that we haven't raised this since ninety-three, I think we need to recover our costs, so I'm very much in support of that. So, if you wanna make a motion.
So, we have a motion before already, so.
We had a motion, but.
No, we're gonna have to change it.
I'd like to move to amend the motion to include the parking fee structure that I laid out, and that was code section ten dot zero-two dot one hundred, parentheses five, twenty-two-five-hundred, parentheses L, twenty-two-five-oh-seven dot eight, parentheses A and B.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Does this give us any, we don't have to renotice or anything, this can be amended as part of tonight's discussion?
That's correct, it's just a resolution.
All right.
Okay. Motion's been made in second, the amended one. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. We still have the remainder of the consent agenda items.
Move the balance of the, uh, consent agenda?
Second. Uh, motion's been made in seconded, any further discussion? No, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item we have is a presentation. See, would you like to read that? Let us go. I'm sorry.
Okay, next we have presentation, South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. Um, Stuart L. Somach, if I said that wrong, I'm sorry, from Somach Simmons and Dunn.
Okay, thank you.
I can do it. I can do it, don't worry about it. My name is, uh, Stuart Somach, and, uh, I have, um, okay, now, am I standing in front of this so you can't see it? Is that all right, that works?
Okay.
I, uh, I am going to use this first slide, uh, actually, even though it's just supposed to be an introduction, to do more than it was originally intended to do. Uh, I am an attorney, and I have, uh, been retained to assist, uh, the various jurisdictions that are involved in the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, to do basically two things. Number one, to internally get our act together, so that we actually have a plan that we, uh, agree on. The "we," uh, at least in terms of governmental jurisdictions, are listed on this sheet. And there's another slide that does this, like ten slides down, and I was trying to figure out why we waited that long when we put this great PowerPoint together, but, so I decided to use it here. Uh, there, uh, is, uh, the, uh, project partners, uh, are the cities of Rancho Cordova, Elk Grove and Galt, Sacramento County, Sacramento County Water Agency, and the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. So basically, all of the jurisdictions, governmental jurisdictions that are within the South County. We have here today, um, uh, the, uh, planning directors of, uh, the two other cities in the county, and I'd just like to introduce them, uh, to you. Uh, first is, uh, Paul Yonker, he's with the city of, uh, Rancho Cordova, he's the planning director there. Uh, Robert Sherry is the planning director with the county of Sacramento. And, uh, uh, Pat Blacklock is with the city of Elk Grove, and he's also my operator here, so, um, you know, he's, he's got double duty here. Um, the, uh, South Sacramento HCP is actually a HCP that's been in process for ten years, something like that. Uh, and, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, job is to do, as I said, two things. First thing is get all the jurisdictions together to get agreement, working with landowners, working with other stakeholders that have interests, uh, um, in the HCP, uh, to make certain that we have some internal, uh, agreement and, and solidarity. And then to do the next step, and the next step is to negotiate with the various regulatory agencies that are involved in the Habitat Conservation Plan. The purpose of tonight's presentation really is to provide you with a update. Um, I have already provided this exact update, great, update to the, uh, city of Elk Grove, and I'll be, uh, meeting with the other jurisdictions that, that you, uh, saw on that first, uh, slide over the next, I think it's three, four weeks, that we have these things planned, uh, for, so that by the end of that period of time, all of the jurisdictions will have seen this presentation. Um, the presentation is intended to, among other things, uh, create some consistency in terms of your, uh, expectations about what is, uh, what is happening. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about scheduling of the various things that have to be done and the schedule that we're looking at, and talk a little bit about the implementation process itself. Uh, now, in, in that context, one of the things that I want to, uh, uh, underscore is the fact that, um, this presentation is, maybe I would call it the, we're at least at thirteen thousand feet. We could be higher than that in terms of what I'm providing here today, but you gotta start somewhere. The thought was that, that this would be the first of many presentations, and of course, your staff will be providing you with separate presentations on issues that are specific and perhaps unique to, to the city of Galt over, over time. Uh, that ultimately, you will have to make decisions about inclusion, exclusion, and whether or not what is being proposed and developed as part of this, this, uh, process is something that, that, that satisfies you, and if not, we'll have to work real hard to, to try to get it around to, to that point. And that, every, uh, elected body that's involved in these jurisdictions, I'm telling them the same thing, you know, and so this is not the end of a process, even though it's in ten years. Uh, it really is in terms of the bottom line, the very beginning of the end, uh, and this is where you'll be faced with some, some decision-making. Um, there are really no decisions to be made tonight. Again, the presentation is broad, to start the dialogue or to start the, uh, the, uh, you know, thinking on all of this stuff. Uh, obviously, a, a, a first step is, well, what is a, a Habitat Conservation Plan? Um, uh, the Habitat Conservation Plans, uh, emanate from requirements under the Federal Endangered Species Act and also the State of California's Endangered Species Act. That's kind of how it, it begins. It will include other issues besides species, it'll talk about habitat, we'll deal with wetlands, but the fundamental underlying thing that's driving it is Endangered Species Act, and the Endangered Species Act provides, in essence, that, uh, take of listed, uh, plants or animals under the Endangered Species Act is unlawful. Um, and that, that the penalty for taking, uh, endangered species is, you know, dollar monetary fines and actually, uh, and, and, uh, in some circumstances, in a lot of circumstances, um, you know, jail time in terms of, uh, those violations. They're both criminal and civil violations that, that are implicated under the Endangered Species Act. And so the question then is, how do you move forward with any kind of a development or other, uh, uh, opportunity, um, without running afoul of it? And one of the things that you can do is get a permit, uh, to take species. And the take you do is, is what you call an incidental take. The reason for your project ought not to be to kill endangered species, it ought to be a, a unintended but obvious consequence of, of, of doing it. And so that's why they call it incidental as opposed to direct take. There are direct take permits you can get, um, none of which are relevant to us, and so I won't go, go into that. Um, the, uh, the Habitat Conservation Planning process actually was later, uh, than the rest of the act in terms of its origin, and it was a mechanism to address problems that were presented by having such a stringent law that really, uh, precluded a lot of things that obviously needed, needed to be done. Uh, the plan itself, uh, defines conservation measures for species and habitat, and it's not just species, it's habitat. Most species, endangered species are endangered not because of direct take. And not every species is a buffalo that, you know, got hunted almost to extinction. Most extinction, uh, or threatened species status has to do with the, uh, the unintended consequence of, of taking away habitat. So habitat is very important under the Endangered Species Act. Um, it also has the effect of simplifying the state and federal permitting process. Uh, and it attempts to create a predictable regulatory framework in order to allow communities to move forward with, with the development that they've, they've planned in terms of their general plan, planning and other kinds of, of documentation. Uh, there are obviously challenges associated with moving through one of these projects, uh, that, that one is, are attempting to, to address. The take issue is one. Uh, I mentioned wetlands, but, you know, most habitat, particularly in the parts of the county that we're talking about, have a lot of vernal pools and other kinds of, of wetlands, which are covered under section four oh four of the Federal Clean Water Act, which is a parallel act in terms of, of environmental compliance with the Endangered Species Act. That habitat is kinda covered twice, because species that live in vernal pools are listed as endangered, therefore their habitat is also, uh, covered. But in addition to that, their habitat happens to be wetlands, and you need permits to fill wetlands. And so the idea is to try to pull as much of this stuff together, so that you don't have to go at these things eighteen, twenty different times and, and, and ways. Um, it can be, if you don't do this whole thing right, very time-consuming, um, and costly, and involve a lot of individual negotiations that, that unfortunately become, uh, dependent a bit upon what somebody else is doing and their, their independent, uh, um, uh, process. So absent a Habitat Conservation Plan, what you have is, is a piecemeal way of addressing all of these things, creating a situation where you can't get the level of certainty for ongoing development that you need, and doing what you do is a very costly, expensive and time-consuming, um, uh, process. Um, the, uh, the, uh, and, and of course, I'm gonna ignore the fact that this HCP has already taken ten years. I mean, one would be hard-pressed to believe that you could've done it any slower than we've been at this thing, but, uh, you know, we're gonna try to prove that you can get it ultimately done fairly quickly. We have a timeline at the end of the presentation I'll talk about, but we're on a pretty quick timeline to do all. timeline to do all of this stuff. As I said, this won't be the first time that I appear on this issue here, and as we proceed, we're going to get, you know, increasingly substantive in terms of what we're proposing and be willing to answer any questions, and I'm willing to answer any questions when I'm done here also. The Habitat Conservation Planning Process is one that's used throughout the state. The figure there is that as of February 2005, there were more than, almost five hundred, four hundred and seventy-nine approved HCPs in the United States. Most of those are in the West, quite frankly, or in the south, the southern Gulf areas, where they have a lot of wetland and other kinds of issues. There have been a lot of regional HCPs developed in Northern California. There is one in Solano County that's being developed right now, in Yolo County, Contra Costa County, and Santa Clara Counties, all very similar in nature to what the South Sacramento HCP is doing. The reason we know that is because the regulatory agencies that we're dealing with are the same regulatory agencies that are involved in those HCPs, and so, you know, we have to watch a little bit in terms of making certain that something that's agreed to in Solano County or Santa Clara County does not, if we don't like it, become a template for what we're going to have to deal with. So, we've been watching these other HCPs pretty well. The South Sacramento County HCP, we believe, has benefits. Some of them generalize, some of them very specific. On the generalized benefits, they're predictable, streamlined permitting process. It will define what the mitigation requirements are so that, you know, going in, we'll know exactly what those things are going to be required. It ensures natural resource protection. It allows for a regional conservation strategy, and in some respects, that allows the broader region to benefit from a broader regional resources, as opposed to one isolated area, the city of Galt, for example, having to rely upon, you know, its boundaries to address each and every mitigation measures. This allows the HCP as a whole to be looked at for those purposes, thereby maximizing the benefits that we can, or what we can bring to the table in order to address mitigation issues. On a real practical basis, it will allow the Freeport Regional Water Project to move forward and provide service. It'll also support our ability to meet sewer service needs within this area, and it will facilitate both public, in the way of other infrastructural and other improvements within the South Sacramento HCP, and also private development, you know, that will be undertaken. Without the HCP, you've got to go project by project. It's uncoordinated, it's ineffective in terms of species mitigation, and it really creates a regulatory burden that becomes daunting at, you know, at best. It's daunting. With respect to some of the specific facilities that I talked about a moment ago, it's going to be very difficult for us to provide service to new water users within the service area of Zone Forty, more difficult to pay debt service on bonds. And I'm going to talk a moment about a parallel thing that's going on that you haven't focused on, and this has the potential, at some point in time, of really derailing everything, talking about it, but I want to talk a little bit about what is known as the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. And I'm going to show you a map in a moment and address that, but one of the benefits of the South Sacramento HCP is that it acts as a defense against the problems that can be imposed upon this area and other areas within South Sacramento that may be implicated in the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. But I'll talk about that in a moment when I have the map so I can show you a little bit more about what we're talking about. I mean, skip over regional cooperation, although our idea is to cooperate, and I've already told you the agency's... See, I don't know why that's back there. It didn't seem like we should have put that up front, but I don't know. In terms of community engagement, and a lot of this has been happening for a long time. I mean, one of the things that I'm amazed at, you know, coming into this thing ten years after it started, and I've been around ten years, and I've worked for the county and others for all that time, and I've been aware of all of this stuff and dabbled in it. I had no idea it was just kind of going at this kind of a pace. And so, it's quite amazing, you know, that the jurisdictions have hung in there, but even more amazing is that you've got a lot of individual people that go to steering committee meetings and everything else, and they've hung in there for ten years. And so, we've done a lot of outreach between the steering committee, and that steering committee includes representatives from agriculture, landowners, business, environmental community. I mean, it's quite amazing that they've hung in there, and they're still there, and we're going to use the steering committee and subcommittees that we've developed as part of that process to really help us accelerate and move through this stuff. We're meeting with the agricultural folks, separate, to talk about their issues, the landowners, you know, particularly those that have development projects that may be affected by an HCP, to kind of hear them out and figure out where they're at and all this stuff. The idea, of course, is that we're... All of those interest groups, stakeholders, ought to be benefited if we do this HCP correctly. And that's the idea, and that's why outreach is an important aspect of all of this. Now, the HCP boundaries, and there's a map there that just shows it. It's a pretty large area. It encompasses about three hundred and forty thousand acres, Highway Fifty on the north, Interstate Five on the west, the county line on the south, and the county line on the east. And it, you know, and we're going to talk a little bit about how we're dealing with urban service areas and so forth in a moment, but in the aggregate, that's a lot of territory, a lot of land, a lot of interest on the part of a lot of people as to how some of that land is dealt with in the HCP. Now, I mentioned a little bit earlier this Bay Delta HCP. What we have here is kind of an overlay of the Bay Delta. It's called the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, and it's a combination Habitat Conservation Plan and then an NCC CP. I don't know how many Cs are up in there, but under state law, it's supposed to cover that. It was originally formed as a aquatic-only HCP, and it was for the purposes of addressing problems in the delta. And the sponsors, or in this case, that coordinating group of jurisdictions that were involved, were water users, all of whom were south of the delta. So, we had Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, Westlands Water District, the Kern County Water Agency, plus the Department of Water Resources. Those were the folks, this was their HCP. Well, you know, I don't know about you, but that has a potential problem, you know, ring to it. If you are living in portions of Sacramento County, and, you know, you can see, you know, a large portion of Sacramento County is within what we call the statutory delta. Delta is defined, certainly physically, but it's also defined by statute, and the HCP that the water users are doing is, its area is the statutory delta. And what we've shown here is the overlap of the Bay Delta HCP with the South Sacramento HCP in certain areas, and, you know, you can take a look at that prior map also in taking a look at that. And it doesn't overlap in a lot of areas, per se, but it is immediately adjacent to our HCP. Now, originally, as I said, it was going to be an aquatic-only HCP, looking at fish and stuff like that, and it quickly kind of morphed into more than that. It's dealing with wetlands and the breaching of islands and the development of more wetlands. And it's also going to take a look at the proposed points of diversion and the route of the peripheral canal. And that involves terrestrial species, the exact same species and kinds of habitat that we're dealing with in the South Sacramento HCP, and it's running right up against us, in some cases overlapping here and there. And so, there is a great concern on one level about having an HCP being developed, covering land that is within the jurisdiction of Sacramento County, for example, or some of the cities, without any of them being a part of that HCP process. That's one whole universe of concern. The concern I raise here is a little bit different, not that I'm not concerned about that, but that's not the purpose of being... The concern I raise here is, you know, there's only so much mitigation out there, and they're only, you know, these endangered species, you know, are the same, and what we don't want to see happen is the ability of us to move forward with the HCP that we want to be adversely affected because of what they're doing with their HCP. And so, we're spending some time attempting to coordinate. I use this as an example, though, as another reason why the South Sacramento HCP is important because without it, we're defenseless in terms of everything that's happening in that other process. We have nothing to offer as an alternative. We'll need to get, as we move through this process, various permits and agreements. They include these incidental take permits under the state and federal act. We'll need to get, under the Clean Water Act, Section 404, permits for the fill of wetland, and we will need 401 water quality certifications associated with that. We will undertake both a SEQA and a NEPA document that will have to be done in order to support the HCP, and we'll get long-term stream bed alteration agreements with the Department of Fish and Game to take care of some of the issues that are being dealt with. We've got two ways of demarking how we're dealing with areas. The first is... That's interesting. That's a map, and it basically shows the urban development area, and it separates out what's in the urban development area from what's not in the urban development area. And it basically, then, if you take a look at the urban development area, and I have no way, of course, of saying... I mean, it'd be one thing if there was a line that wasn't there, and I could have told you, well, about there, and you move up, but... The urban development areas are basically the adopted general plans for each jurisdiction. So, we took the general plans of each jurisdiction, drew a line around those. Majority of the plans take, that is, the areas where we want to take species, occurs within the urban development area. And that will provide, within those areas in the general plan set for development, a pretty predictable and streamlined permitting process that people will be able to go so that the state and federal permitting on this stuff doesn't become an impediment. The UDA issues anticipates the Galt and Elk Grove sphere of influence. Now, I spent, oh, probably twenty minutes to half an hour dancing around this issue with the Elk Grove City Council in terms of the sphere of influence. And the bottom line of what I said was, I want to be consistent every time this question gets asked of me. We're trying to account for most of the development that's likely to happen within the sphere of influence as part of this process, but, you know, there is, there are other processes involved in the sphere of influence, including the whole LAFCO process, and we've got to be careful how we go about doing what we're doing and how we commit to development or not development within these spheres of influence. So, what we're trying to do is move forward with a HCP that will account for as much development as we can, you know, in terms of anticipated development in the spheres of influence, but we may not be able to account for everything. And then, what we're trying to do is put ourselves in a position where if we have to go back and do something, we can do so through minor amendment. One of the things I didn't say at the Elk Grove City Council was a minor amendment means you don't have to go through all the additional environmental and other work in order to do this. And what I did say there also is, I don't know if we're going to be able to do it. I don't know exactly what it's going to look like. We're going to know that within the next couple of months. That's, you know, we're thrashing that out right now. You know, this is, you know, where we're down to some really hard decision-making, and that's one of the things that we'll be bringing back to you, to the Elk Grove City Council and to others who are interested in these issues, in order to let you know what our proposals and recommendations are. And then again, of course, you have the final word with respect to your inclusion or not within the HCP as to how you want to proceed. And so, you know, the sphere of influences, however, we know are important issues. We know that you and Elk Grove, they're critical issues to you, and we'll be addressing them. And I hope, you know, when we have a more definite proposal to bring back, that we'll be able to discuss in some detail those issues, and quite frankly, your staff will be able to discuss them with you before even we have the broader discussion because they'll want feedback from you all on some of these issues as we look at maps and start really getting down to the fine-tuning of this. Obviously, the other area, if you're within the urban development area, for some of this stuff is outside of the UDA, and the way we're handling stuff there is, we're trying to coordinate mitigation requirements. We're going to use a lot of that area to address needs of various species and habitat types. Two things, though, that are critical in terms of development. Number one is, we're not changing any existing zoning. So, the notion is not to change any existing zoning that exists outside the UDA. That will be the same. And we're going to need to allow for some infrastructural projects in that area, and we'll try to identify and come up with mechanisms to move forward with the permitting of those things, those infrastructural projects. Next steps. I said this kind of a whole bunch, but I'll just kind of summarize it here, is the next step is, project partners, that means you and the other cities, as well as the districts and the county, will need to develop and finalize maps and drafts of the South Sacramento HCP. We need to finalize, from our perspective, the details so that you know exactly what's being proposed in those areas that you're critically concerned about. We will then also, and some of this we're working on in parallel, need to work with our consultants and in our outreach process to define the plan economics and financial planning. That's as critical a part of all this stuff because someone's got to pay for some of the mitigate, for all of the mitigation that's being contemplated within this, and you have to come up with an economic and financing plan that not only satisfies landowners, jurisdictions, and others on our side of the table, it's got to also satisfy the other side of the table that there's some real dollars available and on an ongoing basis to acquire lands and to maintain those, the way the HCP will promise to do it. And another step is, we need to step up our community outreach and involvement. This meeting, the others, are part of that. You know, they're public, and a lot of folks, I hope, you know, are watching and listening to this. We'll also need to continue to work with the regulatory agencies to develop the plan. Again, those include, among others, Fish and Wildlife Service, the Corps of Engineers, Department of Fish and Game, the Regional Water Quality Control Board with respect to 401 certifications, and then ETA, which has jurisdiction over a lot of this also. Finally, the timeline that we're working on, and I'm going to just simply tell you that we're... After ten years, it ends up we have a January 2011 drop-dead date. You know, I don't know how you get there after ten years, but that's where we're at. So, all we did was go back to that date and put together the most aggressive plan that would get us there. These are obviously not micro timeline scheduling. These are some of the big events. You know, we, again, want to complete a preliminary draft of the South Sacramento HCP by April. It's already the beginning of February. By September, we want to complete administrative drafts for internal review of the plan and the draft EIR/ES, and the implementing agreement, which will have all the details, including economics and financing. By June 2010, hopefully, complete the finals and get those things out, and then hopefully, you know, this thing gets adopted in and around January 2011. That drop-dead date is dictated by the biological opinion that was put together for the Freeport Regional Water Project, which is the project that will bring water supplies into a lot of the South Sacramento County area. And that is... I intended to actually go faster than that, but it didn't work. But if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any that you have.
Any questions, councilmen? Don? Andrew?
I'd like to ask you a question that may help the public understand a little better and help make sure I'm correct. If you go through this whole process and we're successful and you get a HCP, what that means is, is that any of the area that's in there will know what the permitting requirements are, what they're going to have to do, and that they can proceed with their project. If you aren't in that, then what would happen is, is each individual development would have to mitigate theirs on an individual basis and probably go through the same steps on each individual project that the whole plan would have to go through. So, what we do is, by having it done once and the area is there, then you don't have to go back in and do it every time there's a development. And that's the beauty of it if it's successful. Am I close?
No, you're right on. I, I mean, you know, I wouldn't even touch it. It was perfect. That's it. You got it. I'm hoping you gleaned that from something I said as opposed to.
Well, in fact, I attended a couple of meetings and the staff kept telling us that. So, it kind of was ingrained in our mind, okay?
That's it. I mean, a landowner is always free to say, "I don't want to go with your HCP. I'll just go it on my own," for example. You know, the worst thing you can do, but sometimes they do that and, you know, that's fine.
You had mentioned the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. And I believe the governor had put a passport together to address the issues in which you had mentioned, the peripheral canal. And as they progressed through their process, what effect will they have? Do you anticipate any effect that they could have on this HCP you're proposing?
Yeah, I think it could. I mean, you know, that's why I raised the issue. I mean, I didn't raise it because I wanted to throw, yeah, one more complicating factor on the table. I mean, I think it's a legitimate potential problem. Now, we have met with the folks at the state and we have met with the Fish and Wildlife Service in attempting to not have it adversely affect us. Ironically, as much money and manpower as they've got in that thing, they're not on a timeline that'll get it done by January 2011, which is kind of ironic after we took ten years. We may actually, because we're really working hard now to accelerate the work that we're doing, and a ton of work had happened during that ten years. I mean, one of the things we have is, this may be the best complete from a species and habitat understanding perspective of anything that's out there. And so, we're in great shape that way. But, the thing we've got going for ourselves is the fact that they won't be done before we're done and the agencies are committed to finalizing our HCP when we're ready. And so, I'm hoping that then will act as a defense against anything they do after the fact. Now, there's a lot of other things going on in the Delta besides the Bay Delta Conservation Plan that are of concern.
Right.
But they get into all kinds of other issues, not really directly related to the HCP.
And I could see where some of the issues might overlap. That's why.
And we've been monitoring all of that stuff and on a number of levels for a whole bunch of reasons. So, we have the benefit in this process of knowing not just what's happening in the Habitat Conservation Plan, but knowing what's happening in the whole Delta planning process, you know, propose legislation before the legislature. So, we've got that in mind as we're moving through with all of this stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other councilmen who have questions?
Couple. If I could, first congratulate you or commend you or console you for your willing to participate in this snail pace project and.
It's not snail pace now. It's on a really accelerated and besides, I'm.
We will hope. I certainly hope that it achieves some of the goals that are called out and the simplifying of a variety of things is one of them. But, believe it or not, I think it was about forty years ago this year, I was a member of the Sierra Club and also what they called the Monitor. And my job was to go to meetings and not represent the Sierra Club, just collect information of the meeting. And I began attending meetings on the peripheral canal forty years ago, and that's back in the news now. And the Delta Project's about the same time and this and everything else. So, as slow as we are apparently at doing this, many of the agencies you listed, I'm sure as you know, has been our experience, that they're even slower than we are. And so, we'll see where this all ends up. But I'm glad there is some progress. We've been hearing it on the council and staff for a number of years. Hope it can reach the goals we're all after. One thing I was curious about, and while Rob Sherry is here, and actually, I see Mike Eaton's here, a number of us also were having meetings with the county and Elk Grove is here, and Elk Grove, about reaching some agreements on a green belt between our cities, much of the land that also is referenced in here. So, while you're here, it would be nice if those meetings could resume and progress could be made on that snail pace program as well. So, maybe we can invite any of you or all of you to push those who need to be pushed to come back to the table and I'll be glad to, or whoever the council wants to. Pick up where we left off. But the same belt of land seems to keep coming up for a variety of discussions and maybe all those can be accomplished.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I'll be back. As I say, look forward to it.
You have to give a communication as well. I'm just going to ask the question. I'm going to propose to, I was going to wait for you to turn the lights on or have the chief.
And maybe the state legislature will adopt a budget before this comes before them in 2011.
While we're waiting for the lights to come on, our next item is communications. Are there any? I think we have, councilman.
Go ahead, girl. All right. Yeah, I actually have two, if I could mention them. One is, and I will comment on this more, but former Mayor Beederman passed away in our community and had services recently for him. And one of the things he had given me some while ago, I pulled, and I just wanted to read a segment of it. It's an undated letter, the only thing I know from sure because of two dates he puts in there, one being 1946 when our city was incorporated, and he references after thirty-two years. So, this letter was dated sometime in 1978. He talked about the growth of the city and planning for it and enlarging it and general plans and other things and his admiration for the civic involvement in the community that resulted in the building of a football stadium, Little League ball diamonds, a swimming pool, a number of things. But just the last part of this that I think kind of talks about how he felt about his involvement. He says, "The next two years," keep in mind this is 1978, "the next two years will be very dramatic as the city has completed plans for a civic center complex, which will house a new police department, justice court, library, city administration offices, council chambers, and a modern civic building for community activities." I take that to mean the Littleton Center. "The citizens of Galt have been very gracious to me. For the past thirty years, I have been able to serve as a city councilman and four terms as mayor. This has allowed me to meet with many other people in cities. I have had the opportunity to serve on the Sacramento Local Formation Agency, which we call LAFCO, the California League of Northern Cities, the Sacramento Yellow Mosquito Abatement Board, and as president of the small cities of Sacramento County. There have been times of frustration, joy, and in the long run, it has been a rewarding and very educational experience." And it was signed Robert E. Beederman, Mayor, City of Galt. And greatly missed, great guy. He, I know, I think all of us, certainly I can tell you, that he was always willing to offer advice, whether you asked for it or not, and that was one of the charms of Bob. He always had a very, very fond place in his heart, not just for the city, but for the people of the city, certainly those who've served and elected in staff positions. And he'd shared with me a number of documents over the years and that one just seemed to capture, I think, what he thought, looking back. And so, I just thought I would share that. On a different note, under correspondence of more of a verbal nature, last time we were together, I mentioned I'd become the vice chair of STACOG. Apparently, it's in the water or something. I've since become appointed the vice chair of the Air District as well at the last board meeting. So, I will serve in that position for the next two-year period. So, that is. Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations on your communication. Okay. Andrew?
Thank you. We received an email letter today from a resident of Galt talking about the Galt Shopping Complex located on C Street. Made references to whether or not this building was being brought up to current California Title 24 standards. To answer some of the questions in this email, one of them was, is the rest of the building envelope being brought up to current building codes? It is. It also asks whether the building is possibly not going to have an overhang on the west and south sides of the building. It is going to have an overhang. It will be twelve feet wide, if I'm correct, Kurt.
That's right.
Which is about twice as big as the one was there before it. And the other questions just talked about why we would allow a building like this to renovate the way that it is in the City of Galt without enforcing our own building standards. But we are, and this building will certainly be closer to being energy neutral than it was before these renovations could play.
Certainly. And we took it a step further, just to clarify that. It was under section, I think, fifteen hundred and something of the California Energy Code where compliance is identified. But I think one of the issues raised was, you know, are we replacing the plate glass windows? Well, one, you don't need to with the shading factor, but two, it is a significant substantial cost to the property owner and ultimately, the tenant. You can't estimate what those energy requirements are until you look at the whole of what the tenant improvements are within each one of the rental units. So, you don't start by just doing one aspect without evaluating the rest of it. They are not pulling permits on any of the tenant buildings. It's an independent structure separate from the main structure, so.
And we did have some communication to see if we were in compliance with this construction. Is that right?
Yes. You know, we had done the plant, building department had done plant check, it passed pan check. We checked with the Energy Commission just to find out what specific sites they were and we got an email confirmation.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That was later this afternoon. I did have another conversation with the vice mayor on this.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is scheduled matters.
Proposed amendments to the Galt zoning ordinance, Galt Municipal Code, Section 18.20.060, Table 18.20-2, addressing setbacks and maximum heights for detached accessory buildings, structures and equipment, one hundred and twenty square feet or less in cumulative area in residential zoning districts.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item was directed by the city council back in October. You had asked us to initiate a zoning code amendment to address concerns with regard to the placement of principally side yard fences in the Gulf Old Town area. At that time, there was, we indicated there was discussion about the widths of the right of ways down there and the right of ways do not go, are wider than what the street widths are, the paved surface and where the sidewalks are. That created the problem where if a property owner wanted to place a side yard fence at six feet, they would actually have to be six, or excuse me, ten feet from their property line. And in most cases, that ended up being about an eighteen, fifteen to eighteen foot setback from what is otherwise the back of the sidewalk or where the back of the sidewalk would be. So, in looking at this, we went down, we surveyed the area to find where most of these issues would occur on the eighty-foot right of ways. We have an area included verbally within the ordinance that identifies the streets generally where this would be applicable in terms of the new code. And the new code would allow the placement of six-foot fence at the property line on, in areas where you have this eighty-foot right of way. So, you will still have six to eight feet, almost nine feet of a pathway or planting area beyond what, where otherwise you would have a four-foot sidewalk. So, I think it accommodates what the intended purpose was that council wanted to see accomplished. And I think it also clarifies a lot of, or legitimizes a lot of fences that are already existing. So, on that portion, I think we've addressed what the council wanted to address. We also addressed a couple of minor cleanup provisions in the code. The new Uniform Building Code requires permits on detached structures that are in excess of twelve feet. That's a new maximum height. They also have a new required setback from property line, which is five feet unless there is a one-hour rated coating on the outside of that detached structure. At the Planning Commission, the amendments were recommended for approval as submitted and staff had indicated that in looking at, you know, if you have a fifteen or even a twelve-foot shed at your prop, back of your property line and you have a ten-foot rear yard, you could have something which is probably approaching the height of that, five feet or three feet beyond your property line for a detached shed. So, you walk out, you're ten feet from your rear property line, that's three or four feet. Staff had suggested looking at a maximum height of anywhere from between nine and twelve feet. The Planning Commission did recommend a maximum height of ten feet. So, it's up to the commission or the council here on whether you'd wish to lower that maximum height from twelve feet, which is the maximum under the Uniform Building Code, to something along the lines as to what the county or the Planning Commission recommended. They were concerned about the aesthetic qualities of rear yards. That's really about the only other issue. So.
Any comments? We have to go to open hearing too. Do you want to save your questions?
I have a question to the report. That was the one item I noted was the ten versus twelve-foot height.
Right.
Do you know offhand, is a typical Home Depot or is there a typical Home Depot-type shed? Does ten eliminate all the things that are available and twelve keeps them in or?
Most of your, most of your metal sheds are under ten feet.
Okay.
You have some of those tough sheds.
Yeah.
They can have the.
They're a steeper pitch.
They're a steeper pitch, kind of a barn look. They can exceed the ten feet. So, we would, if you did adopt this, we would certainly notify those manufacturers in the area of the new requirement, if it is in fact.
The reason I raise that is, and Kurt will probably remember, you know, three years ago, we went through quite a deal on not just the height, but setback from fences and everything else. And I don't use that brand, but a product like that was pretty prevalent throughout our community. And so, my next question is, what do we do about that?
The ones that are existing, nothing. Any new installations and if there are, and one of the harder, one of the hard issues regarding this is, they are a non-permitted structure.
Right.
So, it would rely on a property owner being adversely affected to, you know, contact the city. And then, we would simply advise them that they would have to move that to a standard setback, which would be five foot off your side property and ten foot off your rear.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I support staff's recommendation, Planning Commission's recommendation, so I'm fine with that.
We're going to go to open public hearing. Any comments from the public?
One thing I should, I would like to add, these are all for sheds detached that are under one hundred and twenty square feet. If it exceeds one hundred and twenty, then they have to meet standard setbacks.
They're portables.
Doesn't matter if it's portable. If it's over one hundred and twenty square feet, it has to meet standard setbacks.
My guy, General Park, I mean, the question I have is, let's say, in one of our houses, in fact, we've got a lot down in Creekside that's a quarter of an acre, or no, it's almost a half, it's twenty-two thousand feet. And if the gentleman wanted to put a mobile home behind the twenty-five foot, twenty-foot setback, what do we do? And because of mobile home, you're going to have, I'm talking about the ridge. Where's the ridge in relationship to the plate line? And are we talking about, our houses are seven and twelve pitch, so you'd want to make the, you'd want to make the outbuilding the same pitch and so on. You wouldn't want to go to five and twelve or something less.
Are you talking about RVs?
Yes.
Okay. RVs are separate, they're not defined as a structure.
No, no, no. I'm talking about an RV inside the structure.
Well, you would exceed, you would be exceeding the one hundred and twenty square foot area. Therefore, you would have to meet standard setback, which is five feet off.
Oh, I understand, I understand the setback. I'm talking about the height.
No, then it would go to a standard structure like your home, like a home.
Okay. So, we're not talking about standard structure like a home that I put an RV behind my fence?
No.
Three-story RVs, story?
Other comment? We'll close the open. Any other discussion from Council? Oh, I thought you leaned forward.
No, I'm good. Then at this time, I'd like to make a motion approving the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
So that's incorporating the ten, not twelve foot height, right?
Yeah. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item is ordinances, regular calendar, Treasurer's Office.
The Treasurer's Report for the period ending December two thousand eight.
Oh, we could, okay, I can say they stepped out, we could.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't, sorry.
That's all right.
Thought you had stepped out, I apologize.
Nope, no, the bald head's still here. Safe from the shine off the mine. Yeah.
Just think basketball, okay?
Yeah. The, um, the, the primary duty and responsibility of, of a city treasurer, of course, is to keep, keep the, the money safe. And here, here in Galt, it's, it's no different. I will say, you know, your money is safe and what, what money there is, it is safe. But I do want to tell you of a, of a story. I attended a Treasurer's education, continuing education last week. And there, there were two, two city Treasurers, one, the city of Costa Mesa, and another one, this Treasurer for the city of Burlingame. And what, and, and what they both, well, I'll say, I'll start with the Costa Mesa. What they did is they bought corporate bonds. And that's a very allowable investment. I could do the same thing, buy just any, any corporations' bonds. Well, and, and many, trust me, many cities do this all the time. The bonds that they, they purchased, they spent five, five million dollars on the bonds of Lehman Brothers. Well, for those who, who follow the financial markets, Lehman Brothers, of course, declared bankruptcy. Now, as I said, they spent five million dollars to buy those bonds. Their, their investment today, and Lehman declared bankruptcy, what is in, I believe, in October, somewhere, October, November, sometime, timeframe there. Their investment today is worth about five hundred thousand. It's about ten cents on the dollar. So, you know, although the, the, you know, every Treasurer's goal, of course, is to maintain that safety, it doesn't necessarily always, always happen. I'll give you the case of the city of Burlingame. City of Burlingame invested money into the county of San Mateo County Pool. And the county pool invested in Lehman Brothers' bonds. Well, Lehman, of course, filed bankruptcy. This county of San Mateo didn't necessarily in, tell Burlingame what, what had happened or what they had invested in. And what they did is simply sent them a report at the end of December, at the end of the quarter, and just showed as a line item, Lehman Brothers' bond loss. And they were, they were nailed for six hundred thousand dollars of the, the county of San Mateo's pool, which really wasn't, in my opinion, is not, not right. But same thing happened in with Monterey County. Monterey County lost thirty million dollars on, on Lehman Brothers' bonds. And of course, and I'll mention this, Calpers, we all know Calpers. For Lehman Brothers' bonds, they had invested three hundred and ninety-three million dollars. Now, ten cents on the dollar, you can do the math. It's not worth very much anymore. Now, having said that, I will just say that for the month of December two thousand eight, the city of Galt's yield on, on our investments was two point seven seven percent. I will also, and that's, that's real good in these, in these economic times. I will also tell you that that yield will be decreasing. It, it's going down fast. We have a majority of our funds in the state of California life account. Well, the life always lags about sixty days, so in December, it had a pretty good yield. But that, that yield is, is dropping rapidly. As a matter of fact, it's below two percent now. In December, it was two point three five. During the first six months of our, of our fiscal year, the city earned seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in interest. Well, if you annualize that, that's one point, one and a half million dollars. I can tell you right now, because of the drop in the, in the rates, we will not receive one point five million dollars in interest. It'll be closer to about one, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest. So, you know, we all know what, what kind of economics times we're in. It's the only thing that, as Treasurer, that I can do, of course, is number one, keep your money safe, and your money is safe. We, as long as I've been Treasurer, we, we haven't lost a dime. And of course, keep it liquid and then earn the highest yield possible. So with, with that, I'll, I'll ask for your approval for December two thousand eight, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff?
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Nice that we haven't lost any money.
Yeah, well, well, and, and one thing with Lehman Brothers, and as I said, I could invest in corporate bonds too. And the requirement is that, according to state code, that company has to have a rating of A, was A one rating. Well, believe it or not, Lehman Brothers did have an A one rating. As a matter of fact, the Moody's Corporation, the one of the rating agencies, rated them A one five days before they declared bankruptcy. Believe it or not, yes, yes, they did. So they came out with the rating A one. Five days later, Lehman filed bankruptcy. How would any city or any entity that had bonds like that, how would they have known? They wouldn't.
No way.
No.
They wouldn't have.
Wow. Okay, is there a motion? I'm sorry.
I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks. City Manager's Office.
Family Life Church Conditional Use Permit.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. The details of this are included in your staff report. I will go through some of the highlights. Mr. Baldwin already touched on a few of them. And as way, by way of background, on October nineteenth, two thousand eight, the City Council approved a variety of fee increases on planning services. One of those was the Conditional Use Permit fee increase, which went from five hundred and sixty-six dollars to three thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars, to more accurately reflect the actual cost of staff time involved in, in preparing the Conditional Use Permit fee. As is typical with, with other fees, went into effect approximately, went to effect sixty days after the Council adopted it, which, which date was October twentieth, two thousand eight. Late August, after the Council adopted the, the new fee schedule, staff was approached by Rick Keizer from Family Life Church. The church was interested in locating a new building out in the industrial park for worship services. The, at the time, the zoning code didn't allow worship services in the industrial park, in the light manufacturing zone. So staff brought back to the Council a zoning code amendment, or not to the, first to the, the Planning Commission and to the Council for the zoning code amendment. It was ultimately adopted by the Council in November, I think it was November fourth of two thousand eight. Prior to that, staff informed the applicant that the new, the Council had recently adopted the Conditional Use Permit fees, which would go into effect on October twentieth. We advised that, that he would be allowed to go ahead and do a concurrent process instead of waiting till after the new zoning code amendments were approved. Said, let's get your, get your permit in before the new fees go into effect, so you can avoid paying these higher fees. There was some misunderstanding, some confusion. He, he had a difficult time getting his lease before the zoning code amendment was done, and so was not able to submit the plans and the application prior to the new fees going into effect. And the ordinance, the, the fees that the Council adopted say that the fees that you pay are the fees in effect at the time that you submit your application for your permit. So, um, so staff and Vice Mayor Payne and Mayor Shelton met with the applicant to discuss the fee issue, as well as some of the issues surrounding parking at the site and some other, other minor issues, to see if we could come up with a solution that would work for, for both sides. We are working through the parking issue. It looks like we've come up with a solution that's gonna work. We're just finalizing some of the details that won't, that won't need to come back to Council. However, on the, on the fee issue, that's something staff does not have any discretion over. It's a Council adopted fee. We don't have the ability to say, no, you don't have to pay that fee. So that's why we had to bring this issue back to the Council for consideration to see if the Council is interested in, in charging either the, the current fee that was in effect at the time Family Life Church submitted their application at the end of November, or the prior fee that was in effect prior to October twentieth, when staff first had the conversation with Mr. Kaiser, Keizer, about, about doing the concurrent process of the Conditional Use Permit and the zoning code process. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. I know Mr. Keizer's here. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions if the Council has any. Staff would also be happy to answer any questions that the Council might have.
Just for the sake of full disclosure.
Oh, okay.
I have attended, I have attended Sunday services at Family Life. I've also contributed money during the offerings. I don't think it would be anything that would cause me to recuse myself, but I'll leave that to the discretion of the city attorney.
No, the, the fact that you've attended worship services there, provided money to the organization is not a conflict under the, um, under the FPC regulations. And as long as you feel that you can sit and exercise disinterest regarding this matter and protect the public, public interest, then there's nothing that would prevent you from participating in this discussion.
Thank you.
Any questions from Council, the staff?
No, not at this time. There's no one out in the audience this house?
Yeah, well. Anyone from the audience? I'll ask. No? Okay. If there are none, what's the direction from Council?
I'll make a motion that we, I think, staff has pointed out where the confusion occurred in this matter. And I don't think it was intentional on either our side or the applicant's. I think both were acting in what they thought was the, the right timeframe, and there was just a disconnect in it. So I would move that we allow them to pay the lower fees that they believe they're operating under and undoubtedly would have filed earlier to get that fee anymore than if you told me Best Buy's having a sale on TVs that's ending Sunday, I'd get in there Sunday and not go on Monday. But if I thought the sale was going on till next Wednesday, so we'll make the motion, we allow them the lower fee.
And I'll second it, just, I think under the circumstances, I think it's reasonable.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
I'm sorry, did you?
Well, I'm just gonna comment that I, I wanted to comment on the way the staff was so cooperative and trying to find a solution to this. I, I think you should be applauded and appreciated for your time and your efforts.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Under full disclosure, I have given the pastor a hug hello once or twice, or a pat on the back, but.
Next item, Public Works Department. All right. What's up, Jake?
Master Vision Plan for the Law Enforcement Firearms Training Facility.
Greg? Mayor and Member of the Council, it's a pleasure to introduce again Paul Kavanaugh, City Engineer, who will make this presentation. Thank you, uh, Greg. Uh, this evening, we're gonna bring before you the staff item here, that you have a two-page agenda item, and you, some of you have, all of you have this complete document in electric form, but some have it in the paper form. Tonight, I want to talk about the capital improvement project called, if you look at the capital improvement project we approved in two thousand and six, it's called the Upgrade and Expansion of the Police Shooting Range. And when I first took this job about a year ago, um, part of my work was to assign capital improvement projects to either myself or my staff. And this was such a unique project I took on myself. And of course, the budget in the capital improvement program was fifty thousand dollars. So I had to upgrade and expand the police shooting range, so this is what I did. I'm gonna give you a brief rundown of what I did and, and the process, where we are today. With that kind of a budget, I had to come up with an RFP to get some consultants to help us out. So in order for me to write an RFP, I had to find out and learn all about pistol ranges. So I called the NRA back in Maryland. I talked to architectural firms that specialize in police facilities and pistol ranges. I, I talked to people from Arizona that have these ranges, people from Nevada. I, I came up with a RFP with some basic information. And when, when an engineer starts to solve a project, he, he always needs a map. So I needed a map of the site. If you look, look at the slide here, you'll see, if you recognize Twin Cities Road and Ninety-Nine, the sewer treatment plant, and the pistol range right now is right there. And in order to expand and improve it, we wanted to use the unused property to the west, this area right here. So in order to find out what my limitations are, I needed a map. So the scope of the RFP was mapping. And then we needed needs assessment. Police Department operates it today, and in order to expand it to bigger and better things, we needed to know exactly what we wanted to build there and why. And then after we've found out the needs assessment, we needed several options of layouts to look at the physical layout of, of more pistol and rifle ranges. Once we had, once we chose an option, we started doing the engineering cost estimates to provide parking, buildings, utilities, so forth and so on. And, and then the final part of the scope of that RFP was a phased development plan to build this over, over many years. Tonight, I have two people that were very instrumental in this. Lieutenant Jim Updegrove is gonna talk to you a little bit later about the history and operation of the facility and what the future brings for it. And then Jeff Atterberry from Willdan, those, those are the consultants that were given the charge to prepare a vision plan, we call it a vision plan. And he's gonna talk about how the needs assessment and the options were developed. And there's a lot of work that was involved in this that's not in this report. We had many, many options, and it took, we worked on this probably for six or seven months. And he will talk to you about that process that his firm did for the city of Galt. And before we get started, I would just want to remind you that the recommendation tonight is to accept the vision plan for this law enforcement firearms training facility and to provide direction to staff as you deem appropriate. Also, in the staff report, you notice that the, under the financial impact, there's no financial impact in approving or accepting this vision plan. We do, however, are beginning negotiations with the next step. That would be the environmental step, site assessment, initial study. And finally, in the financial area of the staff report, you'll see that there are sufficient obligated funds to go to the next step of this initial study. And remember that the rent from this facility is used to fund this work. So there's no, that's where, that's where the funds come from. So at this time, Jim, you want to speak a little bit about?
Good evening, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to kind of help present this vision plan that we have for the firearms range. Like Paul said, we've been working on it for quite some time. Just to give you a little bit of a history about the range and how we, how it came to be and what we're doing with it now, and then where we help, or where we hope to go in the future. The range was constructed back in the mid-eighties. Willie Weatherford, who was the chief at the time, recognized the need for a firearms training facility for the officers here at the Galt Police Department. Prior to that, we were training out at the Sheriff's Department's range, out at, off Bruceville Road, Rio Consumer Correctional Center. But even back in the eighties, it became increasingly. But even back in the eighties, uh, it became increasingly difficult to get range time out there because it was so busy. It was always being used by the Sheriff's Department or by the Police Department or, uh, other surrounding agencies. So, uh, we were, it was very difficult for us to find time to train out there that worked into our schedule. So the chief recognized this, and he facilitated the construction of the, uh, range out here, which, which we operate now adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. It was built primarily, uh, through inmate labor. It was done, uh, over the weekends, mostly through the weekend work crews. So they, uh, put in, uh, all the sprinkler systems and lawn and sidewalks and carved their names on the sidewalk to memorialize their presence there, uh, which still is there today. Um, but it, it was, it was a nice facility, and it, and it served, uh, it served us very well for our department. We also contracted with the State of California Department of Corrections, and they used it, uh, frequently, and they still use it, and we still have a contract with them. And we have contracts, uh, with them and use agreements with other agencies, like Low-Di Police Department, Elk Grove Police Department uses, State of California Department of Justice uses the range out there, the federal government, ICE, Immigration Custom Enforcement, they, uh, they train out there. So it gets a lot of use. And, um, because of that, uh, it's, it's requiring some maintenance. So when we were looking at the, the maintenance requirements, um, we, we were considering what we needed to do out there, and, and begin to kinda see a potential, uh, for maybe, um, increasing the use and a potential for increasing the revenue source for the, for that area out there. It's, it's a fantastic place to, uh, to, uh, put a facility in, and there are a lot of agencies looking for ranges, uh, increasingly, because of homeland security, terrorist threats, there's a lot more focus on, on firearms training. So, and I, I field calls weekly from agencies looking for, uh, wanting to train out there at our range, but our calendar is full almost every day of the week, with the exception of weekends, there's somebody out there training. So we looked at this and said, you know, there's a lot of potential here that we might be able to, uh, to do something and, and construct something that would benefit the law enforcement community, would benefit the city as a revenue source. We take in seventy thousand dollars annually just from the Department of Corrections, and, uh, and there's additional monies that we charge to the, to the outlying agencies. So, um, with that, uh, we, uh, we had, uh, Willdan come out, and they were consultants on the, uh, on the project, and so they presented some, the vision plan that we have here this evening to show you. So, uh, what we're hoping to do is gain some support, uh, your support from the council. And with that, um, we would like to be able to go out and seek business partners from the surrounding agencies, the law enforcement community, and see if we can, um, turn this into a, um, a fairly, um, nice, uh, state-of-the-art training facility that would benefit the, the city and benefit the law enforcement community, and I believe bring some revenue into the city as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Jeff Atterbury. I'm, uh, the Sacramento Area Manager for Willdan for Engineering. And, uh, we were real excited when we saw Paul's, uh, RFP came out because it brought in two of our groups. We have a, we have several groups within our company, and one of the groups we call is Willdan Homeland Solutions, which does what I do for public works departments and our team, other members of my team in Willdan Engineering does for planning and other things. That group does for public safety and law enforcement. So we brought our law and sa, uh, public safety element in there, partnered with ourselves, and came in to help this. And it was really fun for me as an engineer, like Paul, I'd never worked on a, on a gun range before, and to bring, work with Jim, and then our, our guy was also Jim, so we had two Jims in the team, who actually is a former police officer and currently runs a range in Southern California. And he expressed the same thing that the lieutenant is mentioning, he, he's always busy. Law enforcement is needing facilities to train. So the first thing we did is, um, we identified the site, did some survey work. You know, first, um, um, these, this is, this is another picture out of it. But what we had to do was figure out what we wanted to do in terms of what the, the city needed, what the Elk, uh, the Galt Police Department needed, et cetera. So we need to develop some visions. So the first vision, we, we developed four of them, like this. And these are not visions that normally we would present to a council, 'cause they're real schematic, but they were something for us as a leadership team to discuss. But we developed this vision, this vision, this was another vision that we developed, and finally settled for our first draft on what we called Layout Number Two. Now, this particular one didn't work very well for several reasons. Wasn't enough room for the officers to operate their training operations in front of the ranges safely. The building's in the way. We couldn't get into this range on the end, uh, those types of things. So it continued to evolve. But then, the lieutenant was also able to go out and visit with some of his users and get their input. And this thing evolved into another vision here, and then we had another vision here, and I think this is the one we ended up with. At today, at this point, we all agree that we need to have the councils say, hey, we wanna pursue this further, that this is a good idea. We want our officers to have this facility so that they can train. We have the ability to bring other facility, other agencies in to train them to, you know, with our growing communities, we're getting growing law enforcement office, law enforcement bodies through various agencies, they need facilities, places to practice. And with your presence, your approval here, we will then go ahead and start the environmental process to make sure that's okay. And Jim will turn around and establish different relationships and commitments and funding and other things. That's basically where we are. I'm excited to continue, and, uh, I, we're all here ready to field any questions you may have. Unless you had any closing comments?
Counsel, was there any questions that we may have? Do you have any questions?
I wanna ask a question on this main plan that you have right here. Uh, um, there probably may not be enough money unless there's a war to do the whole thing. Is this, can this be done in phases?
It is, uh, vision that it would be done in phases depending on funding sources.
And if, uh, if there were other types of concerns about size or, or environmental issues, like, could we go back to the simplified one where it was probably three? I mean.
It, it, there's.
Go back to the, one of your, uh, drawings, one of the first ones that you did, I think there was three ranges on it.
While they're doing that, Ted, actually, the report separates five separate phases and includes some sub-phases that can be developed in.
Uh, my, my, my impression is, yeah, there we go.
Might be useful to walk the council and the community through what we're looking at up there. It's hard to see with, you know, what, what exactly we're seeing in those little diagrams. Not the, the ultimate one that you're recommending, not all of these as we go through, just the one at the end that you've decided on.
Let, let me make my comment off that. If I have one, uh, two pistol ranges and one rifle range, and I'm not certain what is in the center, but if my beginning need was that, I could phase that in on the original thing, and then as need grows or as money grows, then I could add the other facilities on an as-needed basis.
Uh, yes, there's a lots of flexibility, they, there's flexibility.
If I could just one, just add one comment. For purposes of sequo, uh, Ted, you would want to, whatever you, the ultimate and, and largest, I guess, usage, uh, that would be allowed, that's what you'd wanna evaluate. You certainly wouldn't be mandated to bill to that, but, and that would allow for phasing.
I, I have a comment to add. The, the first phase, this, this whole, this whole project is, you know, close to three million dollars. But the first phase could be one more, uh, pistol range and one more rifle range for about three hundred thousand dollars.
Man, you're tracking right along with me. Thank you.
And then, as you, of course, we have a commitment with, uh, you know, the state to, they have a, a year lease on the existing one, so we're not gonna tear the existing one down because it's a cash cow. So we build, we build, uh, a duplicate one and a rifle range, open those up, and then when we get enough money, we go back to the old one and fix that one up, and then we, then maybe we do the next range and the next rifle range, and then we start bringing utility. There's, there's this five-phase process through the years, it's many years, and we can slowly get this thing up to its ultimate capacity.
Existing one is, uh, the far right one?
That, that's, that's right about here.
Okay, yes.
That's, that's the existing one. So we'd build either this one and this one, and then come back and rebuild that and build, you know, we just, as, as the money comes in and the rent comes in and we get grants, uh, we, we just do what we can as money comes in.
It is likely they would, you would, for example, complete all the grading in the initial phase. Uh, right now, they're proposing a combination of walls and berms, so we would then do some of that as dirt became available. We'd probably do all the grading upfront.
Greg, would that have to be put out to bid, that grading?
Uh, certainly, yes.
It would.
It, we, we'd get to the public works project, yes.
Okay. I think the important thing here that I'm hearing is that it's gonna be built as funds come in through rental or something. We're not looking at taking money, additional money from the general fund. Is that, isn't that the plan?
That's our, that's our vision today.
Yeah.
As things come by and we get grants and we have to supplement here and there, but we'll, we, we would have to come back to the council for any of that.
Mm-hmm. I think originally we had, what, fifty thousand in our CIP budget?
Which was this, the master class phase.
And then, right, now, is there more or is it all beyond the?
Let, let me, let me clarify a little bit. Uh, the lieutenant, uh, needed to go back a little bit. We've only been collecting this large amount from this, uh, the Department of Corrections for the last two years. Prior to that, the amount of money that we got was nominal, and, uh, we knew that they had an ongoing interest because they want to have something close, and any other facility that they would use is very, very expensive. So we went back to them and said, you know, we need more rent and we need more money from you. And what we would like to do is, is do this master planning process to see what we could do, and our intent would be to use some of your money in the future to improve this and have a better range. And we, and, and that's what we went with them, and they agreed to pay the higher one. So there is some commitment on our part in the future, if we can upgrade this, that we, we would use some of that money to do that.
We have enough funds that we've collected over the past two years to do the next phase, I believe, which is the scoping, environmental work.
Environmental, that would be what they call the initial study, which is an indication of what would be required relative to the environmental process, whether it be mini-gang deck, full EIR, but also, uh, have contact with the surrounding property owners to get a, a gauge in the level of support or non-support for the project.
There's another thing, too. Um, most of the people that we contact with or that use it other than the CDC and ourselves is usually learned of it by word of mouth. We have not gone out in order to market this. Matter of fact, if we did, we'd probably be inundated. I'll tell you my, my story. This is after, uh, September eleventh, after the bombing. It was about a, about four weeks. A lot of times, I'll just drive out in the afternoon, see who's out there and what's going on, the wastewater plant.
Don't ask.
I go driving up to the first range, and I look at there, and there's three Suburbans and two black, all black, and, uh, and two sedans. And there's, uh, about ten or fifteen people, women and men, dressed in black suits and white shirts, and they're out there at the range. And they've got their pistols out there and they're shooting. So I drive up behind them, and I walk out, and I said, how you doing? I'm the city manager, this is our range. Could you tell me who you are? And they said, no. And I said, well, you're using our range here. We know that. Who gave you permission? Oh, we talked to somebody, and they, and they said, you come over and use this range. And then one of the guys pulled me aside, and he said, well, let me tell you. So I can't tell you which agency we're from, I can't tell you what we're doing here. But we were called in from Washington, DC on an emergency basis, and we haven't qualified with our pistols, and before we can go out and work tomorrow, we have to come and shoot. And I said, okay, go ahead and shoot. Now, this honest truth, to this day, I do not know who they are, and I do not know who they work for.
Were they the men in black?
Uh, and women. There, there were, there were three or four women with them also. Uh, but.
And they had guns.
Yes, they did. But the thing of it is, is that we have to, we'd like to move this along, the potential on this is just unbelievable, uh, but it's gonna take the money, and we shouldn't do it until there's money available. But I need to verify that this is only for public use, it can't be used for sporting, or it can't be used for the outside, it has to be for that training facility. I don't, I mean, Greg probably gets hyperventilates when he sees, uh, five ranges there and he thinks, if that thing's built, how many people's gonna be coming there on a daily basis using that? But this is to be phased in over a specific period of time, and it wouldn't be automatic. It would have to be phased in on a scheduled basis.
Uh, currently, the revenue we're making off of, uh, the range now is, what, seventy thousand a year?
That's, that's what the, the lease with the CDC, we get additional revenue from some of the other agencies on a, on a day-to-day basis.
And what do we predict would be with this, uh, build-out? What would this be, uh, generating, you think?
You know, we really, we really don't know that. We do know that if we could get enough users with a steady income, for example, I think that if we can upgrade the facility, CDC would probably give us a, a long-term contract. They've been using it for how many years? Fifteen years?
Yeah, they've been using it for about fifteen years. Um, like the city manager said, we were charging, uh, the amount we were charging, that we're currently charging, it was quite a bit less, it was about twenty, twenty-five thousand a year that they were paying, and then, uh, a couple of years ago, we raised that up to seventy thousand a year, which they gladly paid. Just kinda to give you an idea, uh, to lease time out of Sacramento County's range, it's seven hundred dollars a day. And, uh, Linden runs the range, which is significantly smaller than that, it's about four hundred dollars a day. So there's a lot of potential to, uh, generate, uh, quite a bit of revenue out there. But we, we, and we haven't really explored all of it yet, but what I would, um, what I would consider is entering into long-term lease agreements with, uh, agencies, and that way that we guarantee them a place to train, uh, a place to store their equipment, and then we have a guaranteed revenue source for, you know, a, a given period of time, twelve months, twenty-four months.
Have we looked at any revenue potential under Homeland Security that might be out there that we could use for this range?
You know, there's grant funding available. Um, I know that there is NRA grant money, uh, Homeland Security does have money available for certain types of, um, construction and facility use. I don't know specifically for this, but that would, that would definitely be something that we intend to explore.
I know you mentioned ICE, we're, uh, trained out there, and I'm sure.
ICE does.
You know, because they, uh, joint task force that they have out there might be some potential, but if we could, uh, I'm just curious, if we can, uh, getting into a, a group of, uh, agencies with a long-term agreement, is there a potential that we could actually bond, get that money?
Let's take it one at a time. First of all, uh, we do have a federal lobbyist. He has the information on this, and, uh, uh, he's looking at what the potential is. A lot of it depends on which agency and who we've got and who's using it, so we're looking at. If we can, uh, get a concept and if we can tie into something long-range with the CDC, at seventy-five thousand dollars a year, we could bond to a certain amount and probably begin some of the phase.
Okay.
If we had other users, and our intent would be to use bonding, once we get the, the concept approved and we can tie in to a long-term use.
Yeah, because I see a lot of potential, uh, revenue and, uh, but also there's other potential. I mean, you get a lot of people coming out here training, we're gonna get revenue off of, so, from tax dollars, that they're gonna be investing in the community, but also, it's the other networking potentials for the police department and also.
Well, there's some, there's something very unique about this, and, and, uh, Chief Matthews told me this, and, um, I don't think he would lie to me, but he said, one of the, in the public, one of the problems with shooting ranges is, is that most of them qualify in buildings and underground, uh, storage areas and where the, the climate's totally controlled. He said, there's been a real move to have people go out into the real area with the wind and the rain and whatever else, to practice in actual weather and conditions, and that there's a need for that, because there's so few facilities that, that have that that are available.
Well, they, I assume you still do. I mean, the times I've been out there and watched some of the training, they also do some canine training out there where the dogs have to learn to work out in the open and hear guns go off and everything else, and, um, they hide people in the bushes and trees and that metal storage thing out there, and so, um, to, to dawn, we briefed Congressman Lundgren and his staff last year, and asked them also to start thinking in terms of funding sources, and Pete Dvich, of course, is part of that. And we'll be meeting with them again Monday, I was gonna mention in my comments, Monday afternoon. Um, Peter Tatisi, as we remember Peter when he was with Congressman Lundgren's staff previously, has just rejoined his staff, and he'll be the assistant, uh, deputy, I guess, of staff, and he'll be working out of both offices, Washington, DC and here, so he's gonna come in, and we're gonna update him on the things we've already agreed on, but we'll have a chance, if we adopt this, to go over this with him as well, so.
You know, in, in reading and looking at it, I have to believe there's a lot of, there's a strong potential of getting some revenue toward this, and I, and I like the idea of phasing it in, but also I think that if you could get, uh, some contracts out there other than in, uh, Department of Corrections, and getting some other commitments, I could, I can honestly see as being able to bond it and build this a little bit quicker than we would anticipate otherwise, so.
And I, I think with an adopted vision plan, 'cause when we met with Congressman Lundgren, we had a version of this, but not this, with an adopted vision plan, then you can really say, this is exactly what we wanted. with an adopted vision plan, then you can really say, this is exactly what we want to do, this is the order we want to do it in. And, um, you know, certainly as former Attorney General of our state, Mr. Lundgren has a very strong support for these types of things. And I, I think he would be very interested in seeing this now visioned and, and other groups, I mean, um, so. But we gotta, we gotta know what, what it is we want to do, because that's exactly what they're hoping for. And just like this stimulus package that's supposed to be coming this way, whether it's transportation or anything else, if you don't have a plan and if you don't have anything else ready to go, when that funding rarely does appear, then you miss the opportunity. So this is a good first step.
Excellent. I like what I see by there, Jim, I appreciate all the work, your hard work, you've invested into this, it's a good plan.
It's, it's, it's a good group effort, yeah.
Excellent.
Jim, what's the largest caliber weapon that we currently allow out of our, our existing facility?
Uh, right now, the largest caliber we shoot out there is, uh, thirty caliber, three oh eight caliber.
And we're expecting that that'll be consistent with-
Right, yeah. No, uh, we won't, it'll be civilian law enforcement, uh, firearms, it won't be any military. So none of the fifty cal or any, any of the stuff that you're getting playing with.
Sorry, Andrew.
Although I wish we did. Uh, but no, it's, it's, uh, the range, the range has to be designed to contain, um, everything that's used inside the range area. And so we can't use, uh, we can't use the bigger, the bigger weapons. But, but there's no need, I mean, there, there, they don't have the use in civilian law enforcement.
Look at the two twenty-three, just how far that travels. Not big, just-
Yeah, the two twenty-three, which is the common, uh, law enforcement, civilian law enforcement round, but, um, that, when they hit, when they impact, they disintegrate. So, um, you know, when it's used as designed, uh, the, it will not leave the range area, it's designed to be fully contained.
Uh, one other point of information, uh, for the public or whatever else. We also, um, purchased seventy acres due north of that facility that we own, that we didn't own a year ago. And we did that in partial and in anticipation that if we did this, that we would have more backdrop for that firing range.
Yep. Wonderful question.
Sure.
Ted, you mentioned can't be used for any public, I think was the word you used. But is there any allowance for, like, scouting rifling programs and things on weekends, maybe when we're not using it? I know when I was that age, I wasn't in scouting, but I was on a rifle team with another youth organization. And it's very hard for them to find places they can do that.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that.
I'm hearing no. Well, anyway, we, that's not something to decide tonight.
Of course, he's gonna handle that.
Yeah, I'm hearing a-
Correct.
There you go. Well, I, you know, I, I hate to see the opportunity, you know, any of us who grew up out in the country. I mean, we just went out in fields and shot. And I don't know if that was a good idea, but there was nothing that way for a long ways.
I think we know that it wasn't a good-
Yeah, yeah.
Depends on what you're firing at, yeah.
But anymore, I mean, I gotta imagine it's very difficult for a young person, guys and gals who wanna learn to fire a weapon, shoot at targets. I mean, it's hard to find a place to shoot arrows, let alone rifles. And as I said, I did some rifling and earned my badges and, um, so I would be open to, even though I'm hearing a strong no from some in the crowd, um, especially for organized groups like scouts and others, to maybe offer that for them, I-
I don't think it would hurt to investigate if, uh, there were a program that was directly tied to the police department or for informational purposes that would teach people that maybe-
Gun safety and, I mean, the whole-
I do take my hunter's safety classes, um, we're going out there in, uh, one day, you have the hunter's safety groups.
Anyway, just a thought. Um, in phasing, I think the high school, and someone here could have told me earlier, they're gonna remove some of their portable buildings. And I know we don't have anything out there in the way of a building, even if you don't have much utilities to it. You might just see if any portable buildings in the area are gonna become available, might get one or two out there fairly inexpensively.
Check it.
I'll move, if there aren't further discussion, I'll move the report and recommendation as just a consensus, I guess, you're looking for tonight.
I'll second.
Was there any public comment, Mr. Mayor?
I was gonna ask. Was there any public comment? None? Okay. Before you, before I call for the vote, uh, Lieutenant, I'd just like to let you know that I think this is a great project. It's gonna, uh, not only provide training for our people, our, our officers, but surrounding. Uh, this is something that was in, uh, concept. Uh, I got involved in, uh, the ultimate goal of doing this when I was on, when we had Gulf Fire Protection District. We had the board and we were doing cross-training with our arson and bomb investigators with your agency. So, uh, this is awesome, this is great. It's finally a dream coming true, hopefully that we will be able to achieve.
Yeah, I appreciate that, it's running in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you. So, what, has that a motion?
That is a motion.
I second. Got it.
Any further discussion? None? We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Could I ask, the, the big slide you had at the beginning that sort of showed where it was amongst the property? There you go. Two, two side issues, and I know we've talked about interest before in solar. Um, this project or anything else, there's a fair amount of land out there to put solar panels. So when you start looking at utility needs and other things, because I don't think you're gonna be using a lot of juice, might, might be considering if you can throw some solar out there to help run that. The other thing this reminds me of, see where the word project site and that arrow is? Around there is where our water flows out to the creek that's well above that. And I know we have some things-
There's, uh, it's called Scott Creek.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's right here.
Yeah.
There's a little, this is right here, is Laguna Creek.
Yeah.
Scott Creek gets out there and-
Right. That reminds me that, that kind of bluish, gray land that it crosses into? Uh-huh. I know some of the things we're getting ready to do, we still need to, I've mentioned this many times, we should look at acquiring that property. I believe we still don't own that property. And I brought it up on a number of occasions and the map just reminded me, I, it's not an action item tonight, but I think we still need to get back to getting that under our ownership.
Is that a direction for staff to look at?
Well, council's okay, but it's just, I know we're gonna be hearing some things from, from staff in the near future that has been involved with that property.
Well, there is the Jason property owner, it's in your-
Right, yeah, I know, we've got it on our electronic. Okay, anyway, just a reminder.
Okay. We'll adjourn to, uh, redevelopment agency, you have the roll call, please.
Board members Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here. Uh, any public comment?
Right, no speaker, she's-
Okay. Information consent agenda, if you could read the three items, please.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting of January twentieth, two thousand nine. Approval of the redevelopment agency warrants and approval of the treasures report for the period ending December two thousand eight.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Still moved.
Moved to approve in first and seconded. Any further discussion? None, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Adjourn and reconvene to Gulf City Council. City Clerks Report, did you have anything for us?
Um, just a couple of reminders. The wastewater, on February tenth, the Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Oversight Committee meeting, six P M. in the City Hall Community Room. On February, uh, February eleventh, the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, uh, is canceled. And the City Council has a special meeting on February eleventh, mid-year budget review at six P M. On February twelfth, the Planning Commission meeting will meet here in the council chambers at six thirty P M. A reminder to the public that on February sixteenth, City Hall offices, or the city offices will be closed in honor of Presidents' Day, which takes us to the next City Council meeting.
Comments by staff?
You know, Mayor, I had one about half an hour ago and heaven forgive, forgive me, I can't remember what it was, so I'm gonna say no.
Senior moment, huh?
Okay. Comments by City Council members? Vice Mayor Payne?
I wanted to mention that, um, Kurt, Jason, Mayor, and I met with the owners of the property on Semahorn to kind of get an update, to see what was happening there. Uh, also attended the ribbon cutting of the new, uh, daycare center and the regular shopping center, I think it's called Kids First. And, uh, I would say as a city, we should welcome them. They've got a first-class facility, um, glad to have them part of our city. And then finally, I also wanted to acknowledge, uh, what Bob Beederman had contributed to the city over the years. Uh, he not only spent about thirty-three years, um, serving as a council member and, and mayor, but I don't think he ever stopped after that. He continued to be interested in the city, uh, he continued to be involved in any opportunity that he had. And when I hear the accomplishments that he was able to, um, make happen during his time working for the city, it's amazing. Of course, he had the opportunity because God was just sort of forming into a city. But I know he and some of his friends, Herm Levine, for example, worked really hard to get the, uh, the flea market for us, and they built a lot. Um, they certainly, well, let me say, Bob Beederman certainly has left his mark in this city and I don't think any of us will be able to live up to what he's accomplished. We certainly honor him and miss him. My comments.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Claire?
A couple of things, attended the city employees appreciation luncheon and service awards and congratulations to those employees and to the staff for the event they put on. And Mayor and City Manager kind of emceed that. And behind the scenes, I know a lot of staff made it happen and had to clean it up after we left, so thank you to all of them. Um, tomorrow I'll be, uh, kicking off an event on behalf of S A C O G discussing broadband, especially rural, uh, availability to broadband, to give them some things they don't have throughout the S A C O G region that some of the cities enjoy. Uh, that is from nine A.M. to noon at S A C O G offices. And we have a number of organizations participating in that, like Valley Vision and others. Um, I mentioned again, we'll be meeting with Lundgren's staff to, to get Peter up to speed on what's going on there. Um, and I'm trying to finalize the exact time that's gonna be in. I got your time scheduled, I'm not sure if we can make it quite that early.
Yeah, if we can move it, fine, if not, if it's set for four, I'll, I'll just make sure I'm there.
I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Uh, went by the Brewster Building, take a look, there are renovations going down there, that's neat to see. And right, right now it's cool to see because it's gutted mostly, so you can see some of those great old timbers that are in there and, um, just some of the original work that was done. But it's neat to see the windows in and the roof on and, uh, in fact, I had noticed, I lost it here, there was just a nice article on a similar type of project in Sacramento, uh, what had been the Firestone Building, which has now been turned into a, a restaurant and Irish pub, actually. And so I'm hoping soon that we get an article in the paper like that of what that's, that's-
Jason and I went down to their offices last week to meet with them. Their office in downtown Sacramento, uh, was an, an old white house and it was, and I, and I looked on the side and it said Matt Sui above the door. And so I asked him, he said, it used to be, uh, Senator Matt, was he Senator or House Representative Matt? So it used to be his legal office.
Ah.
That's their office. And then there was a, there's a hotel, a, a Crossland, I can't remember the name of it. Uh, and we went to a meeting at that hotel.
Oh, the Sterling?
Uh, they purchased it, they now own it. That's the one that's still in the I O F building.
Okay.
And, and, uh, and then they took us to a building, uh, in Sacramento. It was, it was red brick and it was about a block long and they bought it and they put businesses all in the back and then they put individual lofts, there was about ten of them on top of it, and they in, individualized each loft. One was a one-bedroom, one was a two-bedroom. And they've just completed that and they've, they've leased up every one of them. And, and it was a total redevelopment. And I'm, I'm sitting there thinking, man, these guys are into more stuff than we realize, but it's amazing the work that they do. They do their own design and we, and it was, you, we're gonna get a quality product off that I O F building.
Yeah, it's already, in fact, well, I was just, I was just there maybe ten minutes, but three other cars stopped and one of the postal people, I'm sure they were off duty. Um, but I mean, people are already noticing, hey, what, what's going on here? And they're stopping, getting out of their cars because the front's got some fresh paint on it and new windows and so that's neat. It's neat, people are noticing that's happening.
Now, there's some good news. He turned to us and, and he said, well, I'm, I mean, he said, um, I gotta bring some steel beams in for earthquake proof. And he said, the cost is going up much more than I anticipated. And I thought, oh my God, what have we done that's wrong? You know, and then he turned and Jason said, well, uh, are we making you do that? And he said, oh, no, it's a Bowery outside. He says, my own consultant's making me do that. Then I felt a little bit better.
Um, two other quick notes, the, uh, the budget meeting that was, was referenced, and I know we keep seeing these types of headlines, so I'm glad our city isn't going through this. And I know we'll be talking, but the latest headline is West Sacramento braces for three hundred and forty layoffs. Sacramento five hundred layoffs. I had lunch with Donna Toley last week and I don't know what they'll eventually do, but, you know, he laid out for me some of the things they're facing and trying to do with their budget. So it, it just continues and we, we should be lucky that our city hasn't had to do that and hopefully doesn't have to do it and looks like we're on pretty good footing. So the eleventh will be good information to get.
Well, I think the grill in the closet is the state. And the sad part, Darrell, is, is that all the ones that are going through what they're going through now, if the state puts an additional burden, they're gonna have to do more. And that's what's scary.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Don?
Okay. Um, just go over briefly, uh, December, uh, status report for the police department. Uh, the police handled twenty-four hundred and twenty-seven calls for service during this month, in which our patrol units, our, our Gulf P D Patrol Division handled two hundred and ninety-three cases and closed out two hundred and three of them. A lot of these cases these guys develop usually lead on to bigger things. That's why it's so important these guys are out there and the job they're doing. They're not just out there giving tickets and out there pulling people over for no reason at all. They're doing an excellent job. Uh, the twenty-four hundred and twenty-seven calls they've handled is a lot of calls for the number of officers we have on the street. Um, it's good to see Gulf P D is, uh, fi- finalizing the contract for the eight hundred megahertz radio tower with the county. I'm glad to see that coming. Um, Lauren, I just looked at our, uh, last year's police report, uh, finalized, uh, our numbers. Looks like our, our crime rates are down quite well. Is that correct? I'm not missing anything? I see violent crime is down.
That's correct, particularly Part One, crime is down, um, about thirty-two percent from last year. And that's, um, oh, in my twenty-eight years, that's the biggest reduction I've ever seen in three different jurisdictions I've worked in, so, uh-
That's absolutely outstanding. And, and we all know that we've been dealing with this crisis for about two years, but I'm gonna tell you something. I don't know that there's any other, uh, city or municipality out there that can say that they, this is, they've got a reduction in crime. And, and my hat's off to you and the police department and all the officers out there because we've been doing this understaffed every bit of the way and you've done an excellent job. And I mean, that's just absolutely outstanding. Um, my hope is, is that as we move forward, because I feel like you guys are pulling your weight and doing an excellent job, I'd like to see us, uh, it's my hope, is that we'll see us, uh, get a little, little bit more, uh, high-tech with some of the equipment that, uh, we can bring to the police department. And it's my hopes that in the planning process that we have coming up, that I'll bring a, a plan to the table, that maybe something that will help you, uh, further, uh, your guys' impact on the crime and that, in, in the community. But I'm telling you, that's just outstanding. I, I don't know anybody else who can say this, so.
I'd really like to thank the community too, because I tell you what, without the, you know, the people in the neighborhoods who, um, are working with us really closely and, and through our outreach with Neighborhood Watch and Business Watch, I mean, we wouldn't be having this kind of success because, I mean, it, certainly statistics don't say everything. I mean, some of these things are demographics, but, uh, when the community and the police department work together, you get a pretty good outcome. And, and the men and women at the P D are working hard, they're doing the best they can.
Yes, they are, and, and we appreciate it very much, thank you.
I'm glad Don brought this up, actually. Um, I think that the numbers that Don's talking about directly reflect upon your leadership style, Lauren. I, I really think that since you've been brought in to lead this police department, you've seen a dramatic change in the effectiveness on the street. I think the community is a hundred percent behind what you're doing. And I, I really would just like to thank you for installing that hard work into the police department that you brought with you when you joined our forces.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, I guess I'm up. Uh, I've talked about conducting, uh, town hall meetings. And so in the near future, I will be hosting a town hall meeting, uh, more of a mayor's, uh, invite. And, uh, it's to allow me to get to know you, the public builders, developers, homeowners. And this will be done in the near future, we're trying to-
And this will be done in the near future, we're trying to get one within the next week or two. Uh, but we will be doing one in the near future and then I personally will conduct one on a quarterly basis, uh, for the remainder of me, uh, being on mayor and then when I'm not for the remainder of the two years I have left. I think it's very important. Uh, I thought about doing this last time I was here and I never did it, so I'm going to move forward. I invite, uh, the first one I'd like to do, uh, is, uh, kind of, I'll just call it a mayor's invite, but certainly what the goal or my personal goal would be to invite all the council members and periodically we could, uh, you know, pick topics and just talk about different things. I think it's very important because we have a lot of stuff that are, that's real positive that we can do and we have some things that are controversial, but I think we need to hear some, uh, positive things in the near future. So, I will be, and I have been working with, uh, the city clerk, you know, to put this on, on our website and I guess, uh, do we know when, uh, you said you were updating that or changing it? Was that the, you were making some changes?
Well, we're revamping our.
Revamping, that's the word you used.
Not yet.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't know if that was right in the near future here, within a couple of weeks.
Um, not the near future, maybe a month.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, not yet.
Okay. Well, before we adjourn, uh, I just hope everyone has a great week and we will all miss, I'm sorry, Andrew. I just had this written down and you guys were talking and we won't adjourn yet. I apologize to you.
I wanted to add, and the only reason I wanted to bring this up is, uh, my Davis Solar presentation that we went to, I wanted to acknowledge Jason, who made the trip, um, didn't get to talk quite a bit during the presentation, but just the fact that he was there interacting with Davis's representatives, I think was a great show of support from the city. Um, the presentation went really well, was broadcast live on Davis's Government Affairs Channel. I think there were about seventy people in the audience, pretty well attended, so lots of very technical questions. There are a lot of, uh, people in the City of Davis who are really in-depth with, uh, solar technology, so I think it went well. So, we're waiting to confirm a date with the City of Roseville for the next presentation, followed by one in Rancho Cudova, so, and then we'll see you at, at SACOG.
Yep, I've, I've actually, before the SACOG meeting tomorrow, I keep mentioning Steve Alitot, I think I've mentioned to you before, from one of the financing groups for solar, I'm meeting with him in the morning to get an update from him on what's happening at the national level, because there's a push now to get away from some of the credits that have typically been given and get some incentive cash, because again, I mentioned, uh, the high school, people like us can't, you can't take advantage of those credits. And so, uh, so he and I are meeting at eight AM at SACOG offices to get a update on what he's seeing, uh, so that perhaps we can take the benefit of it.
All right, okay. Another comment? We'll adjourn at nine thirty-five.
You took, that's a pink memo apparently. I thought it was red.
We did. I had a couple people mention that, Andrew and I are on the pink. That's a good thing. We are four.
I timed you today. I'll come by and I'll take the car tomorrow, I'm going to go home and I'll be doing the internet, uh, that'll take.
Yeah. Um, the meeting, you want all the councilors to be in the closing meetings? For your town hall meetings? Okay. That's what I said, then tonight, I thought you wanted all the councilors to come in. Okay.
Ring would get lots.
McDonald's is.
I don't get to it all.
Hopefully they're all.
Yeah, I have to.
Yeah, I have to.
And I think there's a lot of revenue to that, so the town, town.